Tonight, Mr. McCullough's ever faithful and trustworthy assistant, Harper McCullough, is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Harper, if you want to come here in the middle, everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Harper, always filling in the gaps of your father's abilities. Tonight is a study meeting. This meeting will set the agenda for the regular meeting of July 10th of 2023. We have four members of the council here tonight. Our council colleagues Toy, Donavick, and Barr are either on family business or work business and unable to be here. They will be back for the next meeting tonight. We will start with audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for anybody to address the council on any items that are not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody who would like to speak to us on any non-agenda items tonight? I see none. I'll go to my council colleagues. Is there any announcements from the council? I see none. We will jump right into it with new business. Number one is a block party request from James Geetson to be held on Saturday, August 5th, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Fairfield Street between Plymouth and Orange Lawn, with a rain date of Sunday, August 6th of 2023. Is Mr. Geetson here? If you are, come on up here. As I'm reading off your item for everybody in the attendance, please make your way to the podium. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
My name is James Geetson. I live at 11027 Fairfield Street.
Okay, what kind of block party is this?
The neighbors, since COVID has kind of completed its hold on us here, we have decided that we need to create a little community in our neighborhood. So we were just trying to get together, give some, something to meet the new, the new neighbors is pretty much it.
Sounds good. Okay. Any council motions? Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I would like to just offer my support for that. I think that's a great idea, getting the community together there. Fairfield know very well. And I think that's, I think it's a great community activity. And I'll be supporting that.
We always look for people to do these things to build that sense of community. If this is a first year, there is something called the Neighborhood Grant Program that could be used to fund activities, you know, maybe a blow up for the children or something of that nature. So you might want to look into that in future.
We have looked into that. And I think one of the other families is pursuing that, so.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have any audience comment on item number one? Seeing none, you have a, well, an approving. I'll put that on the consent agenda if there is no objection to that. It means you don't have to come back. Good luck with the party.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the effort. Item number two is a block party from Christina Ziole for Saturday, August 12th, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Summer Street between Riverside and Ashurst Streets, with a rain date of August 13th of 2023. Your name and address, please.
Christina Ziole, 14034 Ashurst Street, Livonia, Michigan, 48154.
Not, oh, okay.
Oh, because I'm not on Summer Street?
No, just the way you said Livonia, I was gonna be like, no, it's okay. We have a lot of time, so what's your party about?
It's the same as the previous gentleman. We just, we do it annually, though, through our neighborhood association, just to get the neighbors together, meet the neighbors, eat together, that sort of thing.
Sounds good. Do I have a motion from the council? Mr. Morgan?
Yep, I'd like to support that also. And just put that on consent agenda, if that's okay, rest of the council.
Okay. Any, any audience comment on item number two? I see none. We'll put that on consent as well. You're all set. Don't have to come back. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item three, a block party from Jennifer Chacabelli for Saturday, August 12th, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Irving Street, between 19031 Irving and the intersection of Clarita and Irving Streets, with a rain date of Saturday, August 26th, 23. Your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Chacabelli, and I live at 18973 Irving Street.
What's your party about?
Same thing, just trying to get to know the neighbors more and get all the kids together. And we've been trying to do it every year, but a lot of the neighbors go camping and stuff, so we haven't had a chance to yet.
Sounds good. Can I have a motion, Mr. Morgan? You're gonna be the block party.
You know what? I'd actually be very happy to do that. Thank you. I think that's, I think it's great that the, the members of the community are getting out and, and meeting their neighbors. And it, it brings a lot of camaraderie in a, in a neighborhood, and I think that's great. So yes, I'll be supporting that and on consent, please.
Thank you. And we apologize if Mr. McCullough shows up for free food. He has a, he has got a bad habit of showing up uninvited, so. Is there any comments on three from the audience? I see none. You're on the consent agenda as well. You're all set. You don't have to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item four, block party from Kara Clark for Saturday, August 19th, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Stamford Street between Schoolcraft, until it deadends at Ford Field with a rain date of Sunday, August 26th, 2023. Your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Kara Clark, 14,000 Stamford Street.
Okay, what, what are you celebrating?
Block party, same thing as everybody else, community, just community and building.
Didn't you have a block party all last week?
No. We had it, you know, it was canceled early because of the weather. We're redoing.
So we'll just take all those fireworks that were left over to your house.
That's perfect. I love it.
Okay, we'll have them delivered tomorrow.
I love it.
All right. Can I have a motion, Mr. Morgan?
Yep, I'd be, I'd be happy to make a motion for consent. That's, that's great.
Thank you very much. If there's no audience comment on four, you're on consent as well. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thanks.
And look for that delivery tomorrow.
Okay, and we look forward to seeing you guys there.
Okay, except McCullough.
Yeah, absolutely.
Item number five is an award of bid from DPW for water repair parts, fittings, parts and fittings, an amount not to exceed $100,000 annually from budgeted funds. Mr. Rushlow, can you give us your name and your title, please?
Yes, certainly. Good evening, Council. Jacob Rushlow, the Assistant Director of Public Works here for the city of Livonia.
Okay, can you tell us what item five is about? Can you give us some details?
Absolutely, yeah. So this is related to purchases for our water supply system, brass parts and fittings, used primarily for repairs of water service lines that, and curb stops provide water from the water main to the residences. In order to move forward with being able to buy these parts, we put out a request for bids on Mitten. Those were open back in, on May 23rd. And Aetna Supply provided the lowest overall bid submission. With that, it's our recommendation from the department that council proceed to authorize those purchases from Aetna Supply Company for water supply, brass parts and fittings, based upon their unit prices and the bid submission, not to exceed $100,000 annually from funds that are already budgeted for this purpose. In addition to that, as is practice for purchases like this, we also request council authorize purchases to the second low bidder, which is Ferguson Waterworks, in the event that Aetna, for some reason, is unable to provide us with the necessary parts when we need them.
Okay. So this is a not to exceed contract. Do you know offhand how close we get to the $100,000 each year?
This one, we actually have not bid out since, I believe the last one was 2012 or 13. At that time, we had, I think they bought pretty much close to what they had. I don't know the budget amount, but they had bought a decent amount of supply and had a good inventory. And we have been slowly chipping away at that. And they, at this point, through the water department, had put in a request to, hey, we need to start to build up that inventory again, so.
So we had a stockpile for about 10 years?
We did.
That's, that's pretty good, I guess. Can I get a motion from council? Mr. Morgan?
I'll support. On consent, please.
All right, we got a five-item streak here. Any comment from the audience on five? I see none. That'll be on consent as well. We'll move on to six. Item six is a request to approve an additional appropriation and expenditure from DPW for the installation and rental of a temporary chiller unit at the Bennett Library from the unexpended fund balance of the library fund. Mr. Rushlow?
Yes, so at the Bennett Library, the existing chiller system, as you may be aware, is currently down to only one working compressor out of three that operate that chiller unit that's needed to fully operate it. So it's kind of limping along at about a third capacity. As we're working through the process of designing and then all, and then bidding out and procuring a new permanent chiller system, knowing that now through this process and talking to the representatives, it's going to take about two years to complete that, that process and have a unit in hand and then installed permanently. We'd like to move forward with ensuring that we can provide adequate cool air to the library and are recommending during the summer months that we install a temporary mobile trailer unit that's large enough to provide air to the entire, excuse me, cool air to the entire building. And in order to do that, we went forward and got quotes. We put out requests for quotes to many companies. We didn't get a lot of responses. We had two that provided us with responses. Both of those quotes are in your packets. To do this work, there's two phases involved as well. One is basically disconnecting the existing unit, running some new piping to the temporary unit that would be on the, on the trailer, both electrical and glycol pumping, and the glycol is the, the cooling material for the chiller unit. So doing the connection work and then also then installation of the unit. So with that, it's our recommendation that council proceed to approve the installation of the temporary chiller unit at the library with the prep work done by Guardian Plumbing. Their cost not to exceed $10,950 and train rental services at a cost not to exceed $150,191.84. And then also authorize an additional appropriation and expenditure totaling $161,141.84 from the unexpended fund balance of the library fund. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
I'm gonna go to Ms. McIntyre in one second. I just, and I'm not being coy about this. How much more would it take to have that piping run into this building, to chill this building as well? I mean, we just, I, this is one of these things, we, we got these temporary solutions all over the place, and I'm not putting you on the spot here. But I'm, I'm hoping that you can elaborate when you're done with the questions in regards to this item, just for the public and the viewers at home and us. Just give us like a two-minute recitation of the process going on for the capital improvement study and all the work that's going into that as well. Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Jacob, two years for the total HVAC replacement. When did we start? Seems to me that we knew about a year ago, maybe more, that we needed new HVAC. Have we made any progress? And I, I know you're here for Mr. Roroff, but I, I think, and I didn't have time before the meeting to go check my notes, but I thought it was about a year ago.
Yeah, I believe it was, it was close to that. I think it was August when we, when we were really having problems last year. So what we did at that time was move forward with our architect and our mechanical engineering contract, consulting service contract, to have them scope that project out. What would it take? What do we need to do to fully design a permanent replacement for that unit? So we authorized them to begin that work through the design process and that scoping development phase, put together the scope documents, put that out to our, our architects for a design phase. Now that we're in the design phase, coming to realize that this is going to take a long time. There's a really long lead time for this permanent unit. We're told anywhere from 30 to 50 weeks just for the unit, once we get bids in. That's why we're coming to you now with this temporary solution of, hey, we need to do something now to have a rental in there to get us by until this long lead item comes in and we can have that installed.
So it took a year to, to get from where we were then to where we are now?
Close to it, yeah.
And we're still looking at two years?
Correct.
What, what makes the two years? I mean, is it material shortages? I mean, I, I'm not an HVAC person, but I can't believe that it's two years of construction.
And it's not. It's, it's, I mean, that 30 to 50-week window is from the day we have all our approvals needed. We've awarded a bid to a contractor. They've met all the contract obligations. And we give them a notice to proceed that says, okay, you can go forward with the project. They put in an order to, like, for the temporary one, it might be Trane as the manufacturer, right? And that's providing this unit. What we're being told through them and the industry is it's 30 to 50-week lead time from when we push that button to put it in order until when that product is going to arrive onsite to be installed. Then the contractor has to take ownership of that unit and get it installed. Similar to this building, and Mr. Jolly had asked a question about City Hall, right? We awarded that one many months ago. That was in, I'm going off hip here. I think it might be October last year when we awarded that contract. The date that we now have from the, the design or the construction team is a July 17th delivery date is the last update I got of when they expect to have that delivery out from the manufacturer. Not even delivered to them, but just on the trailer, being delivered to their site and then here to start that installation process. So that was many months ago as well, and we're now just, and to answer Mr. Jolly's question as well, that, that one's coming a little bit quicker because it was done so many months ago. We already had that lead time in there from when we awarded the contract back last year to get that chiller unit in for the rooftop for this building. So that unit is expected to arrive in mid-July. And then the installation process will be scheduled for that, which will, you know, with the rooftop here obviously being quite elevated, there's a crane operator involved and, and all that work, too.
Is this project related to or completely independent from the new roof project at the library?
Completely independent.
So you can, so you can replace the HVAC prior to the roof being done?
Correct. So at the library, the permanent chiller unit is actually located in the basement currently.
Okay.
It has a rooftop, not on the atrium roof, but there's a rooftop cooling tower, a water tower, that provides the water storage reservoir that's used for cooling the chiller unit. Through the design process, we're actually moving to a different style, which is an air-cooled unit, which won't require a water tower on the roof anymore. That'll be mounted on the ground, basically between the side of the building towards the courthouse and that green space there, because that's where the mechanical room is. That's where the fresher intake is. That's where that air-cooled unit would be located.
And I appreciate the work that's being done here. But to Mr. Jolly's point, and I do appreciate the constraints, limitations you guys are up against, but it does seem that every time we turn around, we're being asked to approve $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 for these stopgap measures. And when you take all those things together, that, that adds up to, to, in total, one significant, probably a replacement of a total HVAC unit. So I, I know that my other colleagues are probably have things to say and circle back to Mr. Jolly. I, whatever we decide tonight, I'm not comfortable that it goes on consent, but thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. President, through the chair, to Mr. Rushlow. I guess my biggest concern is, is obviously this is an existing building. We have a chiller there. Why is design taking so long? I, I mean, that's, I guess, my biggest question. The second one that I do have is, I know that the 30 to 50-week lead times are still out there, but they are starting to cut back in a lot of the industries. I know we had something that went from 50 to 15 weeks, especially with the train, depending on what manufacturer. I know Aon's looking a lot, a lot less than a 50-week. I know Aons are going to be extremely more. But when you have an existing building, I know even you're excluding the cooling tower, but it shouldn't take that long to get you bid docs to get on the street. And if so, then it might be time to start looking at a different mechanical engineer.
Yeah, and we, and we were looking at different options through that process, right? And trying to vet through the scoping development phase, what type of unit would best serve that building? Should we go water-cooled? Should we go air-cooled?
Yeah.
And what we're really looking at now is even kind of moving towards a modular unit, where it's not even going to be just one gigantic chiller unit, that it will be more like 10 different 10-ton units or something, you know? So they're going to be kind of in series together, where if one of them goes bad, instead of having to shut the whole system down, we can just pull one unit out, replace it.
Redundancy.
It's modular type setup. So, and that would also greatly reduce lead time. So we're looking at, kind of trying to be proactive of how can we speed up this process? We know we're being told 30 to 50 weeks for the full unit, but what can we do to try and speed that up? That's why, like, in this request for the temporary rental unit, you know, the price that we have in here is not to exceed, you know, the $160,000 or some change. But if we can get this unit quicker, right? Or even if there's cooler months and we don't need to use it as long, we're paying month to month on the rental unit. So if we have, the permanent solution comes in, we get it in 20 weeks instead of 50 weeks, that's just that much less time than we're paying train rental services for the rental unit. We can disconnect that unit, winterize it, ship it back to train, and we're, you know, saving a little bit of money there. So that's, that's the plan. I mean, we're going to speed this up as much as possible.
And I value everything you're doing. I know you've kind of jumped into Pandora's Box, especially when every, and this, you know, bringing this forward is the right step. Obviously, providing the proper indoor air quality to our patrons at the library should be number one. For that, I'm just going to throw a resolution of an approving on regular, just to have a motion. The other question I do have is kind of a bigger one is, you know, when we start looking at budgeted seasons, you know, I'd really like to see, and I'm sure you're already on it, I know we've got the Plan Moran Needs Assessment, but developing a five-to-10-year CIP plan that goes through. So that way you can go, hey, you know, this one's getting replaced. You can get your bearings on it, so you're not in such a reaction mode. I know you're in it, you know, doing this is, is pretty much the only solution we have. But I would say is, is get on those mechanical engineers, see if you can get that on the streets, and then obviously let them open it up to a basis of design and put lead times in there. You know, I mean, I know you guys will, but I, I do think that's a worst-case scenario. I would be shocked, and I know you would be shocked, to see if it's 50 weeks before we get that up and, up and rolling. But again, you know, I know you've opened Pandora's Box and appreciate you getting ahead of these things, but the long-term planning is going to save us in the end, because these expenditures, I mean, in this, doesn't include the electricity that we're going to be using for temporary power. The last thing I do have, and I'm sure, yeah, this is more of an operational, but see if that temporary train unit can have, you know, off-hour scheduling, so you can maybe save some money by not having that thing full 100% overnight, just in a while it's in operation. So, thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, Mr. Rushlow, I, I have a couple of questions also regarding this. As far as, because I don't have it in front of me, do you recall what the new unit costs with the installation features and everything? What was our, our budget for that?
The permanent replacement?
That's correct.
So the one that's in design right now, and this is the estimate coming from the mechanical engineer, is upwards of $1 million.
Okay. So this, this $160,000,000 that you're asking for here is just going to be adding on to that? And, I mean, as far as our costs are concerned, correct?
Yep, correct.
Have you looked into any other options besides train and their rental? Is there any other companies that we could maybe save some money on this?
Yeah, train was the lowest other quotes that we received. Like I said, we had our building maintenance staff really hitting the network that they have of trying to get companies that do these types of rental units to provide us with quotes. And all the requests that they put out, we only got two back. And that was after, I mean, hounding and hounding for a few months and just trying to get three quotes. Knowing that's our normal procedure is three quotes, that's why we're coming here with only two, is we're just like, we can't wait any longer. We've got to get this thing installed. We're not getting an answer from anybody else. Let's go to council with two, because that's the best we can do right now.
Okay, so in other words, what you're saying is this is our absolute best bottom-line option that we have. There is nothing else. You've, you've thought of everything, and there's, there's no switching out the air conditioning system with an older model or anything like that?
At this point, this is, this is the best we can do to provide that building with full, the built, full building and evolve with cool chilled air is this option.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing else from the council, we'll go to the audience. Is there any audience comments on item number six? I see none. If you have a comment, please come on up to the podium here. Either side is fine. We can ask Mr. Rushlow to step down. Sit down, I guess, if you don't mind, step aside, whatever you'd like. Give the gentleman some space. Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
David Parr, 36757 Marler. I'm a library commissioner. I would like to know when the temporary is going to be installed. And do we have to make some plans if the building shuts down?
Okay, is that all your, is that your only interest?
I, I have a few other objections.
Well, please go ahead and list them all out, and then Mr. Rushlow can respond.
I'm a little concerned that this money is being taken out of the library fund, 150, only because I think that this could have been planned a little differently, and we wouldn't have to take emergency funds out of something that we've, don't have exactly earmarked now, but we have plenty of opportunity to spend the money on programming for the community. So those are the, those are the, we need to know when, so we can make the appropriate plans in the event that this, the last chiller shuts down, because we are in the summer now. And it's got a high potential of failure.
Ms. McIntyre, do you have a question for Mr. Parr?
Well, what Mr. Parr said has prompted an additional question.
I just wanted to know, does, does the gentleman have to stay there at the podium? Okay. You're all set, Mr. Parr. Thank you very much. Mr. Rushlow, if you wouldn't mind, come up to the podium. Can you give us the install date? The first question there, and then Ms. McIntyre might have some more.
Yeah, actually, I don't have that in front of me right now. I'm going to turn and look at Sammy. I don't know if Sammy, Sammy Lovin, our, our building maintenance supervisor is here as well. He's been really integral in trying to get these quotes for us and talking directly with the manufacturers. Looking back, do we have a date? Do we know how long it'll take him to get installed?
We just need to get it scheduled and get the prep work done.
First, yeah. So we don't have a date yet. As soon as we have the approval, like Sammy said, scheduling the prep work first with Guardian Plumbing to have the piping done and electrical work done first. And we'll be working, obviously, with Trane, once we have the go-ahead to get, like I said, hit that button and push the order to have them provide that rental unit. I don't have a date. We'll get one as soon as we can and have that for the regular meeting.
Okay. And I think the more important question, that was maybe a little obscure, is there any reason to think that the library would have to shut down for this work? Mr. Lovin?
No, I don't believe so.
Come on up to the podium, and just because, we want to give you an opportunity. Your name and title, please.
My name is Sammy Lovin. I am the Maintenance Manager.
Thank you, sir.
For the city of Livonia. I don't believe it would be a total shutdown. We may have to shut it down for several hours, but we can get it as cool as possible or schedule that on a cooler day to make it comfortable in the library itself. That's, that's what I would anticipate, that it would, if, if we had to shut down, maybe a day, not any longer than that.
Yeah, just make sure, and I, I know you're going to do this anyways, but let's make sure that we work with the library administration to put people on notice and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, definitely, definitely. We've been in close contact with them, even as we're trying to baby the one that's in there.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. I'm going to go to Ms. McIntyre and then Mr. Parr, if you want to say something after that.
I'm, I'm really getting confused about who, whose responsibility the cost of, the cost and planning of facilities issues at the, who's responsi- it was my understanding that because it's a city building, that DPW is responsible for the work and the funding. But I get the impression, after hearing from some other library commissioners this week, Mr. Parr's comments, that somehow the library commission has some responsibilities for, for addressing and funding facilities issues at the library. And, and maybe this isn't a fair question to ask you, Mr. Rushlow. And maybe this is a, anxious to, you know, look forward to what my colleagues have to say, and only four of us here tonight. Maybe this is a question to go into a committee, because, you know, the library commissioners, the new library director, it's always been my understanding that the responsibility, and I understand there's some budgetary, you know, there's a little, you know, slicing and dicing between what's DPW and what's library, but that the responsibility of the library director and the commission is programming and, you know, circulation and what books we're going to have and all those things. But I'm feeling like there's a lot of responsibility that goes over to the commission and I assume the library director for facilities maintenance. And again, I'm not, that's, I'm not putting you on the spot. This is really a question, and once again, it's unfortunate to me that we don't have anyone from the administration here to address this tonight, because these are the, you know, betwixt and between, so thank you.
If I can just add on one thing on that, just, this seems, it seems very, you know, Ms. Laporte, our former library director, she said something right before she left at one of her last meetings in regards to, it was her responsibility to schedule cleanings of HVAC units and stuff like that. And I think that's why this question's coming up. Like I, you know, Like I, you know, that does not seem to be in the normal wheelhouse of a library director, or as Ms. McIntyre has alluded here, the library commission. So I think it might be appropriate for us, if nothing else, to understand the processes and where they lie. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think, I think Ms. McIntyre's question is certainly fair to, to ask, you know, where the funding's coming from, who's doing the planning, capital planning, operations and maintenance, you know, funding, where that, where that's coming from. It's always, I've always had the same understanding as you. You know, DPW and our responsibility is, is the building maintenance side of that, and making sure that we're working with the departments to, to put together a budget that's going to meet their capital needs. And that's what we've been working on, and Mr. Jolly mentioned it earlier, you know, and kind of given the update on where we're at with the capital plan, right, for not just the library, but for many other buildings throughout the city. And we're in that process. We're starting to do that, and much more proactively than what had been done in the past. I will certainly say that. But, your question's certainly fair. Through the process of bringing this rental unit forward, other projects that I've worked on, like the atrium roof, the full replacement of this chiller unit, we have those concert, con, cons, excuse me, having a hard time speaking on this one, conversations is the word I'm looking for, with the finance director of, okay, if we're going to do this unbudgeted expense that we need now to get this rental unit, what fund should that come out of? And where is that coming from? And that's what we have tonight, is, you know, he sent off on this letter, that's his recommendation to come out of that fund. I'm not a part of that process. Can't directly answer your question in regards to that, but certainly a fair question.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you. So, the, the other question I do have, just for general day-to-day operations. So, the library needs scheduled preventative carpet cleaning. Who, and who, who starts that process? Is it DPW, or is it the library? I guess more of the preventative maintenance side of things, the day-to-day, the operations, the work orders. Is that you guys?
Yeah, I mean, day-to-day ops is certainly, and when I say ops, I'm meaning more like programming and what's being done in the library is certainly a part of their responsibility as, you know, the library directors and what they do and their staff. As far as the building goes, if it's carpet and the staff sees that there's some cleaning needed, that's something that gets through to us and our custodial staff, and we're scheduling that work. We have that equipment, we have the staff to do it.
But I guess, I guess the question is more of the proactive approach. Obviously, this is something I do for a living, and we are the, you know, so any motion sheet would come from facilities. So we would create, the library would be our customer, just like public safety. So, would you have to wait until they call in a work order, or would you guys say, oh, hey, you know what, this is your quarterly carpet cleaning, we're going to take care of it? Is it that proactive, or are you just more reactionary mode, hey, I need this done?
Yeah. I can see Sammy's tapping on the shoulder here, wants to step in.
I can draw, I can probably address this.
Yeah.
We do the preventative maintenance of it. We, if the carpet's dirty, we would, we would schedule it to get cleaned. The preventive maintenance of the equipment, the HVAC stuff.
So like CSD ones, you're doing those?
Well, we hire it out.
Okay, but you're in charge of that?
Yes, yes. And, and as far as taking care of the equipment itself, we do that also. We try to do it quarterly, you know, the filters, and, and we, we check the strainer baskets for the chiller daily.
Yeah.
And we did that even before the second compressor went out.
Well, and I'm sure you're dealing with things. I mean, that brings up another point, too, is the refrigerant, and there's probably R12, which you could probably sell for, is it 22?
Still expensive.
But, yeah, that's, I guess, is the operation, because the commissioners do bring up a point on, you know, I know Tony brought up the duct cleaning. So, you know, should, in my opinion, that should be coming from facilities or DPW as leading that charge. So, those are the questions that we're just trying to get our arms around. But thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Rush, I'm going to, if we can, kind of move on from this, but Mr. Parr, if you'd like to approach the podium again, if there's anything you have to comment on in closing here, then we'll go to the audience and...
I just wanted to clarify that Jacob's been very responsive to all of our requests. My concern now is not how long it's going to take to install it, but when it's going to be installed, the temporary. Because if that chiller goes down, we are down. And, and if we're still weeks away from getting the temporary installed, we're going to have to make some alternate plans, okay? So, that's the question I have, is when will that temporary show up and be operational? And then we just hope that the chiller lasts.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to go to the audience. Is there any comments on this item, item number six? Mr. Rushlow, anything else? Okay, we have an approving for the regular here. Mr. Parr, Mr. Lovin back there, he can probably give you, maybe if you want to ask him, he can give you a little bit more additional detail in regards to the scheduling of that. So that'll be on the regular with an approving. We'll move on to item number seven, an award of contract using the QBS qualification-based selection process from DPW to provide environmental engineering services to monitor sampling, data evaluation, and reporting to the cities, at the cities' type III landfill, and former Act 87 landfill and other related projects for five years, beginning July 1, 23 through July 30th of 28. Mr. Rushlow, tell us about this.
Thank you. Because of the specialized work and certifications that are needed for solid waste environmental engineering services, the department proceeded with a qualification-based selection process to find the most qualified firm to provide these services. Same process we did five years ago. These services, as you mentioned, are focused on really just the, the minimum requirements to meet regulatory compliance at the landfills, through the type III Act 87 rules, like you had mentioned. Through that QBS evaluation process, we put out a request for qualifications. We received six submittals back from, from engineering firms. Our evaluation team had met and reviewed those submittals and compiled the list of three firms for interviews. Through that process, we, we went through and did interviews with all three firms. The evaluation team compiled overall scoring of evaluations, considering both the written proposals as well as the interview process. And NTH really stood out as the most qualified firm with excellent experience and outstanding reputation across the industry. NTH is also our current environmental engineering service provider that has been working with us in this capacity over the past five years. Based on our evaluations through the QBS process, the department recommends that council proceed to authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into a five-year agreement through June 30th of 2028 with NTH consultants to provide environmental engineering services and authorize schedule of expenditures as outlined from budgeted funds over the five-year period. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions if there are any.
So I remember this item coming to us probably five years ago. And I think at the time, I, I requested that the council be provided some additional details in regards to what's going on at this landfill, what kind of exposure we have. And to be quite honest with you, I don't think we ever got that. And my interest still remains the same in regards to, you know, the average resident and probably the average elected official who has not sat through this meeting before, probably doesn't know that we have a landfill. So it would be good to have the information to kind of understand our exposure and what exactly is going on over there. So again, I'm going to ask that we be forwarded some information in regards to the status of the landfill, what obligations we have in terms of funding, compliance, all that kind of stuff. And it doesn't have to be amazingly detailed, but I think it's important for us to understand what that is.
Could I ask one clarifying? When you say exposure, are you referring to the liability that's involved with operating a landfill?
Well, there's purely environmental situations there, right?
Certainly.
And I think if we're going to be good stewards of our community and our assets in the community, it's exactly this council's responsibility to know what that situation is, just as we would expect any business in Livonia to understand what their environmental impact is as well. And this is always something, and you know, maybe I didn't push hard enough last time, but this is something that I'm very keenly interested in what exactly this is. And it may be nothing, and that would be good to know as well, to be honest with you. Just an old landfill that has very little exposure, I, who knows? But that's a question I would like answered for my own sake and for the sake of our community. Do we have a motion from the council in regards to this, or any other questions? He just introduced this, and we didn't have a motion on this yet.
I'll throw an approving for regular.
Okay. We'll put an approving on regular, and if you can give us, when you come to the podium at the regular, just an update of when we can possibly get that information, or if you can provide it before the meeting, that would be great as well.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly put together a summary of, of the regulatory efforts that we have to do, which is what NTH does on a quarterly basis with the testing and what's done with methane gas and groundwater and all that stuff, and give you a snapshot of what, what work is required.
Maybe just forward us the report.
Certainly.
Would be great. Thank you, sir. You have an, well, any audience comment on seven? I see none. You have an approving for the regular on seven. We'll move on to eight. That's a request for additional services with NTH consultants for, NTH, excuse me, with, excuse me, I'll start over. Request for additional services with NTH consultants for environmental engineering services contract from the Public Service Division to amend the five-year agreement with NTH consultants through June 30th of 2028 to provide as-needed environmental engineering services related to the city's landfill in the amount of $50,000 annually, citing Council Resolution 25719. I think we understand, from the previous item, some background information here. Can you just expand on what this is?
Yep, it is. So this is similar to the process we have right now, where we have the five-year agreement with NTH to do the basic minimum requirements to meet our regulatory compliance with the state for the landfill operations. Beyond that, the state loves to give us little curveballs once in a while and say, hey, outside of that, we'd like you to go look at this stuff also, or we noticed something out of the ordinary, and now we want you to test, not quarterly, but monthly, all of a sudden. To cover those costs, what we had come to the council for previously through the last five-year term was to approve an as-needed environmental engineering service amendment to the contract with NTH, an annual amount of $50,000. So that's our, our request here tonight. And what I had done, too, in the pack, and I believe in the letter, was listed off just a, a whole slew of things that had been, come to us from either the Great Lakes Water Authority or Eagle at the State Department, on what types of examples of things they had thrown to us last, within the last five years, outside of our normal obligations in order to meet compliance.
Anybody from the council? Mr. Morgan?
I will offer an approving for the regular.
Okay, we'll do approving on the regular there. Is there any audience comment on that item? I see none. Moving on to nine, award of bid, Department of Public Works for the hydro excavation of water service lines from the unexpendited fund balance of the Water and Sewer Fund to be reimbursed from the drinking water asset management grant. Mr. Rushlow?
Yes, thank you once again. And this one does come, as you had mentioned, to us through a way of grant, which we were able to receive with help from OHM, and Jessica Katers is here from OHM in the audience tonight in support of this project. But the drinking water asset management grant provided us with approximately $425,000 of funding to do engineering, and then also this next step, which is a construction piece of doing hydro excavation at 381 randomized residential locations across the city to get a good composite overview of what we have on a, on a material-based inventory for water service lines between the water main and the home. As you know, we're required through the 2018 update from the lead and copper rule at the state to replace any lead service lines that we have over a 10-year period, once we have these inventories complete. So this is that step, and nice to have grant funds to do it, but to go out and physically excavate on either side of a curb stop in front of the home to find out, is this copper, is it plastic, is it lead, is it galvanized, and create an inventory and a database of those results to help give us an overall picture of what the city contains across the board. So, in order to do that, OHM had helped us create specifications and bid documents that were prepared and put out on Mitten. Five bids were received. The second low bidder through that process is also a Livonia-based, excuse me, a Livonia-based company, and qualified for the 1% equalization credit per the city's ordinance. So that moved them actually into the lowest bidder position. So it's the department's recommendation that council proceed to accept that bid and award a construction contract to underground infrastructure services for all labor, materials, and equipment necessary to complete this hydro excavation project under the drinking water asset management grant in an amount not to exceed $252,869, and authorize, as you had mentioned, appropriation and expenditure from the unexpendited fund balance of the Water and Sewer Fund, which would then be reimbursed with proceeds from the grant. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I have a motion from the council? Questions? Mr. McCullough?
Through the chair to Mr. Rushlow, just a quick question. How long do you think this overall process will take to do citywide?
So, for, for this piece where we're doing the 381 locations, we have it in the contract that this work would be completed prior to December 1st of this year.
Oh, wow. No, I think it's, it's something that, you know, we need to do, obviously, per law. It's great to have grants. Thanks for going the extra mile, great partnership with OHM. I'd be happy to offer an approving and consent if there are no objections.
Thank you. Any audience comments on item number nine? I see none. We have an approving. Was that for consent? We'll put that on consent. Item number 10 is a request to amend the construction engineering contract through the qualification-based selection process with OHM advisors and authorize an expenditure from DPW for the hydro excavation of water service lines from budgeted funds to be reimbursed through the drinking water asset management grant, setting Council Resolution 311-22. Mr. Rushlow?
Yes, thank you. And this is directly related to the previous agenda item with the grant proceeds. So, OHM would be assisting us in the construction phase services with contract administration, data collection and processing, and construction engineering services for that hydro excavation project. OHM had prepared and, we attached the proposal and the contract amendment through the QBS contract, their exhibits for these services. It's the department's recommendation that council proceed to accept this proposal for the contract amendment to OHM for construction engineering inspection and contract administration in an amount not to exceed $38,200, and authorize an additional appropriation and expenditure from the unexpendited fund balance of the Water and Sewer Fund to be reimbursed by proceeds from the grant. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, Mr. McCullough?
I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent if there are no objections.
Okay. Is there any audience comment on item number 10? I see none. We have an approving on consent. Mr. Rushlow, I just want to point out, thank you for always coming here and answering our questions. It's not easy. We're not easy people to deal with. We're throwing curveballs at you quite often. No, myself inclu, myself, I'll speak for myself here. We are, but you always handle them very, you always handle them very gracefully, and I understand that you don't have the information at your fingertips at all times. It, it's just, it's, you know, it's our job as you're doing your job, and we're doing the best we can collectively to serve the community well. But you, you are a professional, and we appreciate the answers.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number 11 is a request to accept stormwater facility maintenance agreement from the Engineering Division from BP Gasoline Station in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for a property located at 33265 Schoolcraft Road in the northwest quarter of Section 27. Mr. Zalinsik, this is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and City Council members. As you're aware, BP was reconstructed at the corner of eastbound Schoolcraft and Farmington Road. Wayne County provided us with the stormwater maintenance agreement to execute. We brought that before you this evening. Everything's in order, just looking for your approval, so then we can move this along to Wayne County and then get recorded. And then that way allows the developer or the petitioner to get their bond money back if everything's in order from Wayne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I'll offer an approving for consent.
Is there any audience comment on item 11? I see none. We have an approving for consent. We'll move to 12. Request to approve a second amendment to the lease agreement for the city-owned building at 332515 Mile Road from the Department of Law, that is between the city of Livonia and Minush Velu. That's Sam's Place Family Restaurant is what we're talking about here, for a period ending August 31 of 2025, citing previous Council Resolution 225-20. Mr. Bernier?
Good evening. As council is aware, the property that is known as Sam's Place Restaurant is actually owned by the is actually owned by the city of Livonia, the real property and the, the building on it. We've been leasing that to Mr. Velu for a period of time as Sam's Place Restaurant. That restaurant is in a unique position because of the Vision 21, so we've been negotiating a series of two-years contracts, not knowing what's going to happen on that. We are holding the rent this year, as it was last year, holding it steady for them because of the issues, and then next year it goes up with the Consumer Price Index. So, that's, that's the contract we negotiated with them.
Thank you, Paul. Counsel, Ms. McIntyre?
I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent. Thank you to Mr. Bernier for the thorough explanation to come in the data that was in our picture.
Is there any audience comment on item 12? I see none. With that, that concludes the scheduled agenda this evening. We'll go back to audience communication. Does anybody wish to address the council on any item not on the agenda this evening? Good evening. Your name and address, please. You have three minutes.
Margaret Earl, and 31545 Pembroke Street. I just want to wish all of you a very happy Fourth of July, and hope that you reflect on the meaning of Independence Day. I'd also like to encourage you to go to one of the local Livonia theaters and watch the Sounds of Freedom movie. I think it's really important that we all know about what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Earl.
Thank you.
Is there anything from my council colleagues in closing? I see nothing. It, it is 8:51. We'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night, Livonia.